Well, it's almost six o'clock on December 21st. And I'll call this Lacey City Council meeting to order. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, all seven council members are here in present tonight. I also want to acknowledge that we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squawson Indian Tribe. With that, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda and consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as printed.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We've approved tonight's agenda and consent agenda. And first up on our approved agenda is public recognitions, starting off with Tom Nelson, running all the Lacey streets. And Jen's gonna come up and talk a little bit about that.
Great. Well, good evening, City Council and members of the public. I'm Jen Burbidge, Director of Parks Cultural Recreation, and tonight, our department would like to highlight an amazing wellness accomplishment of a few of our Lacey community members, Tom Nelson and Molly Pestinger. Did I say the name right?
Yes.
Yes. So we at Lacey Parks promote and provide wellness opportunities, including those that enhance physical health and mental well-being. And so we thought this was a great example of those type of wellness activities. So Tom and Molly, if you want to come on up. And I think you brought Bill with you as well.
Come on, Bill.
So we want to congratulate you. So Tom and his friend Molly ran every street in Lacey this year and finished near the end of October, and they weren't alone. It looks like Bill was with them part of the time. Is that right? And there were other friends as well, as you can see on the screen. Here they are again, running the streets in Lacey. Looks like maybe you had some locals cheering you on at certain points.
The former mayor of Lacey.
Oh, this is the former mayor?
Yeah.
Yeah, Tom Senior.
I didn't know that was Graham. Excellent.
No, that's Tom Nelson, my dad.
That's Tom Nelson.
Oh, Tom. I thought you said Graham. That's, got it. Okay. Some very special locals. And then, who do we have here?
Me and my daughter Lily, after we did a 5K together.
So this right here is a heat map of every street that we ran. And you can see that the Chehalis Western Trail was very popular. And then Bike Route One, whatever you call it, Scott, right up through Judd Street, all the way from Walmart to the south, all the way to Ruttle Road, was kind of another trunk of, and then we would branch off from there. So it took us about a year and a half to do this. And it started out during COVID, we had a couple kids who were going to early morning religion class, and then they would just come home afterwards. So we were, we were kind of stuck for an hour, and we thought, well, let's go running. And then that was Molly and me and a couple of other people. And then Bill joined us, and about a dozen other people joined us. And then we, and then we were inspired at a Lacey Rotary Meeting by somebody who had run all the streets of Olympia. And he had, was inspired by someone who'd run all the streets of San Francisco. And so we thought, well, nobody's probably run the streets of Lacey before. And so we just started adding to it. We'd go, you know, 23rd, 24th, 25th. Every day, we'd do about five miles once a week. And it was kind of just a collection. And pretty soon, we, then we had to do the really hard stuff. So in the summertime, we did Carpenter Road, you know where it goes down, where Greg Cuiot Park is gonna be? No shoulder, 50 mile an hour traffic. Molly and I were dodging, you know, potholes in the side or something. So there were some tougher streets that we had to do. But the really great ones were out, the newer streets in, like Vashon Drive, out by Edgewater and Jubilee, beautiful sidewalks. You've got an edge, like a median between the sidewalk and the road, and quiet streets. And the trees hadn't had time to push up the sidewalks to, you know, put little, trip us in the way. But we would go 6:00 AM every Tuesday morning, 6:00 to 7:00 AM. We did our civic duty. One time, a Lacey police officer raced up to us and said, hey, did you see a speeding car near here? And this was over by Chambers Lake. And we actually saw him a minute later and called him and said, oh, they went that way. Maybe, maybe we solved the crime. I don't know.
First time I ever dialed 911, I was kind of excited.
So that, I think this is a little bit about what we did. Molly, you want to say something about your personal fitness on this?
Well, I, I think that my favorite part of doing this was getting to kind of see how the city has grown in going through the really old neighborhoods. Like, we went through neighborhoods where my dad lived as a child, and then we went through neighborhoods where I lived as a child. And it was really fun to watch. And then we went through all the brand-new neighborhoods, and it was fun to kind of see how the city has grown and how the, I really enjoy history. And I had this Lacey city history expert with me. And so every once in a while, Tom would tell me something, and I, it was just fun to, to really kind of learn the history of Lacey and watch how the, how the houses have changed and how the city planning, you know, kind of how the focus has changed and how the apartments are being integrated in, and the single-family housing is being integrated in. And I just really enjoyed that part of it. And I felt, now when I drive around the city with my kids, I'll, we'll be driving along, I'll be like, oh, I ran down that street. And then I'll tell them what's down there. And at first, they were like, okay. But then, at the end, they were like, yeah, Mom, we get it. You ran all the streets. You don't have to keep saying that. So those were the parts that I enjoyed.
Luckily, Lacey is very flat and, and, and plenty of places to explore, all the way to the north and all the way to the south. And there's a lot of little streets that you may not even know are streets. I mean, we ran Royal Street over by Applebee's by the mall. That's actually a little street there. There's a street behind Claris Eye Center that we discovered later on. And I hope we actually got them all. I looked at the zoning map, you know, the city keeps adding more streets. And so if there's a chunk that you annexed in the last six months, we may not, we may not know. Robin, did you notice something that we didn't do?
I know. I'm just curious what application you used to make the heat map, because that's really cool.
This is called Strava. And if you do biking, running, swimming, it'll map where you went. And it'll, and this is all the runs that we did over the last two years. And a heat map will show if the road is more popular than others, it would be brighter because you went on more runs on that. So some of these small ones down here by Bala Strade and all that, we only ran those streets once.
So as, as you, as Tom has mentioned, he's Lacey royalty. His father is former mayor of Lacey. And we grew up together, went to North Hurston High School together. He graduated a year ahead of me. But my big question is, after doing this, after running all the streets of Lacey, like what, what did you learn? And what, what do you have to, like, tell us? Like, what are the things that you learned that we need to be focusing on after going through a project like this, running every street?
Yeah, there, there, there wasn't as many homeless people that we, that we encountered than we thought there would be. So we thought that we'd be running into that all the time. You know, behind St. Martin's, underneath Slater Kinney, we saw some people. But that wasn't as big of a focus that I thought that, that we would see.
For the most part, I felt really safe, which I didn't know that I was gonna feel that way. And we were running at 6:00 in the morning, and most of the time it was dark. And most of the time, I felt, I felt pretty safe, which was nice.
Well, the streets were appreciated, neighborhoods where they didn't have multiple cars parked in the, in the roadways, those were always helpful. Other things that we learned? I mean, the streets are very well done. There's, we didn't have a big problem with potholes anywhere or anything like that. So it was, yeah, I, I think that cities should be congratulated on keeping clean streets and good, good area to run.
Excellent.
For the most part, I felt like, there were just a few older, like Carpenter Road, a few places that were, that were hard to run on, but for the most part, it felt.
Mayor Ryder, I can add that, that the trail system is really nice to have. Anytime that you have a connection, like the Chehalis Western Trail, the Woodland Trail, there's trails that go through St. Martin's, there's even little trails behind Brooks Park. There's the, the power line trail between, off, between Ruttle and Rumack, kind of you can go through there. Some of those trails make it interesting and probably make it safer for kids to ride their bikes or walk or run.
Great. Go ahead.
Bill, did you want anything?
Well, I just did want to extend a lot of thanks to Tom Nelson. He kept us accountable at 6:00 in the morning. And there is life in Lacey at 6:00 in the morning. And yes, we did, we did feel safe, but he was just quite inspirational. And I'm, I'm glad I, he asked me to join him because, you know, when you go through and you do that, you learn a lot of street names. I could feel like I could maybe almost be a first responder, because one of the things I was told is you gotta learn the streets, especially back before GPS and things like that. So anyway, it was a fantastic experience and would do it all again. We decided to.
Great.
So great job. And this photo, one last photo here is, is after they were all done here, the photos here at City Hall, you'll recognize that. So, so amazing job to all of you. Well done, and congratulations. Yeah, thank you. And I think City Council might want to shake your hand as well.
Thank you. Good job.
Good to see you, sir.
Want to go for each kid? Good to see you.
It only takes us six months.
Be longer than that. So next on our agenda is something that I wish we weren't doing today, but we knew this day was gonna come. And it's, it's a day of joy and a day of heartbreak and sorrow because someone that is so near and dear to so many people here in Lacey is finally has a well-deserved retirement. But I, I can't think of anyone who represents Lacey and what we strive to be as a community more than my good friend Wade Duffy. And he's literally had a part in almost any development that's happened in Lacey going back, you know, 30 years. And that is something that is just impossible to replace. But more than that, he has truly represented who we are as a community, you know, someone that, who's helpful, someone who cares, someone who tries to find common ground and common sense. And sometimes, way too, way too often, common sense in government just doesn't go together. In this circumstance, it absolutely does. And so with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Rick Walk to talk about Wade Duffy and his 30 years of service to our community.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder, and thank you, Council, for allowing me this, this privilege tonight. And Wade, you're gonna come up here. So I'll talk a little bit about how to get him here. And the, you know, one of the things with, with Wade is it's kind of challenging. He didn't want any fanfare, so I had to use some leverage to actually be able to set this up for tonight. And, yeah. But we'll get to that. So again, I want to acknowledge, of course, but I didn't have this in my office, I had it hidden. So I just wanted to touch upon that, you know, Wade is getting ready to retire. He's actually out of the office now. His official retirement date is February 27th of 2024. And he started with the city of Lacey in March 1st of 1993. So pretty much an even number of 31 years of service to the city of Lacey. But what I believe that doesn't count is how Wade started with the city of Lacey, which is, he started as a volunteer intern to get a foot in the door, start learning the code, start learning, as, from his experience of working out in the, in the construction industry, to transition into the inspection role and applying what he learned out in the field, working for various contractors and sites, to then applying it to the codes and approach. So Wade's been here for 31 years. I've had the privilege to work with him for the last 25 years. And, and it's been, it's been a treat. And, you know, again, as America kind of touched upon, one of the, the institutions of our program in, in the Community Economic Development Department is taking that performance base or approach to try to figure out, okay, what's the intent? And then what are the ways we can do that within the framework of the code? And it takes some work to do that. It's not, it's easier just to say, hey, you gotta do it this way, this way, or the code specifies specifically. And what that performance-based code is, it helps us allow us, as we do our economic development recruitment, be able to create a process that is. development recruitment, be able to create a process that is a little bit flexible, but also consistent and predictable in our communication with those potential builders and developers. One example of that is the Target Distribution Warehouse. It came in at originally a million square feet. It was our first tilt-up concrete construction, if I remember correctly.
Yeah.
And we're trying to figure out how that fits in our codes. So Wade and a couple of other building specialists at times did a lot of work with the contractors, with figuring out what their construction methods were and be able to develop that information and say, "This is how it can fit the codes." And with that, we were able to get that first large warehouse distribution facility in.
It almost died.
Yeah.
It almost died. Target flew out twice from Minneapolis, Minneapolis, and didn't understand why it didn't meet the codes, not our codes, but the national codes. Even though they'd built them before, it just didn't meet it. And so at that point, the international codes were being formulated in the first press. Printing was out, but not adopted statewide. And so John Neff, the prior building official, and I sat down and said, "This is going to die." They're frustrated. They've flown out twice, and they're not getting...we can't figure out how it's going to meet code. And we put our thinking caps on and said, "The new code that's going to come out, obviously, is the new code, which is supposed to be better, and it works under that code." So like Rick said, under a performance-based design, which means alternative methods and materials, that building was approved and built. It was buildable. I mean, it sounds ridiculous that we wouldn't be able to build it, but that was a fact.
And that obviously set the entire standards, right, in the what we see in northeast Lacey because of that construction.
And I'd also worked with, you know, as we worked with getting to build that relationship with the brokers and the realtors, they come and they talk to us. We figure out how we can make things work to meet some of the vision of the community that are establishing our conferency plans. The other piece of it, too, is that's just one project. There are several others. And there's one that we worked on together in '05, '06, which is the Cabela's Project. And that's another one where we had to take some unique designs. We had to coordinate a bunch of different construction sites with public road construction, site construction. I think there's three different contractors, worked for three different groups in that whole process, and we're trying to coordinate and consistently. But if you've ever been in Cabela's, you understand Mount Constitution, which where having all the diorama and their stuffed animals. That was another situation where we had to sit down and work with them, and Wade led that effort with...
The fish tanks.
The fish tanks and then the steel structure, because you can't just do an engineer design because they're building it as a, you know, designing it as they build it. And so we had to do some creative work in how we assess the structural engineering.
They thought they could set the fish tanks on a platform like you do your TV, on a TV stand. And they're like 35,000 gallons each, two of them about 10 feet apart, and just set them on a platform. And so we flew out...I flew out to one that was being built in Chicago, identical, and it was just getting stocked. It was completed. And I walked through and looked behind the aquariums. They had the same setup, and they were just sitting like TVs on a TV stand. And we told them when they first came in, "Hey, we're not trying to be hard, but those tanks need to be anchored." And it got to the point where they're freaking out, and we're trying to help them, and they're calling all over the nation. And finally, they got ahold of this guy that designed the fish tanks for SeaWorld. And his name was Jake Choi. And he called me, and he was laughing. He goes, "I got this, Wade. I got this." And I said, "That's so awesome." He goes...so anyways, he goes, "I'll meet up, and we'll get this all figured out, and I'll bring my wife, and we'll go out for dinner." And we never did that part, but he made it easy. But they were freaking out.
And Wade has like a thousand of these stories of all the things he's done across our city. It's truly amazing.
It's true. And so I'll kind of move along with...but I just want to kind of iterate that. As we work in trying to create the vision for the community, and we still go out there and try to recruit, work with our property owners, our developers, and then recruit businesses, it's basically like an assembly line. You've got to get the stars aligned, get everybody in the place. But you also have to rely on that predictable process. And then it comes down to the land use permitting, then it gets into the building codes, and that's that final step. And that was where it really key, because that's where some of those final pinch points are. People are already invested, and so now they're looking at time as an issue and trying to work through those problems issue quickly so that they weren't burning time and they can move forward with their project and get it open. So in all, in all of that Cabela's project, from the time we brought them in, they applied for land use permit, we were able to...that store opened within 12 months. And they had a lot of complicated features there. And that's a testament to the whole system and that approach on the building side.
And the build itself just took 20 weeks. Once they broke ground, it was 20 weeks. They shave seven weeks off of their normal schedule.
So in addition to these big projects, part of the great thing that Wade brought to the City of Lacey and the community is that conversation, that partnership across the counter, whoever, whether it was homeowners, whether it was the builders, you know, working with Olympia Master Builders and working with, you know, new code updates and new codes and trying to figure out how to match those things in. That was one of the things that Wade, it was more than just applying the code, just getting to know the people, what they needed, and then also, you know, sharing a little bit of Lacey history, because he could not resist.
Yeah.
Because that's a very mention. Lacey probably...or Wade knows probably about everything that ever happened in Lacey, and then also knows every building in Lacey, because he's been involved with it some way or another. And so that wealth of knowledge...
Someone is making up for my youth, where I was out there on my steamboat causing trouble.
And so as we...you know, again, that's the other piece of it, and that created that relationship across the counter and people to come in with problems. And I have one story that I just love, because it was early on, and we had a gentleman that I think he was in the historic neighborhood. This guy came in, and he was actually talking to both Wade and I at the counter. And he goes, "I got a problem. My dad's building a deck, and I think he needs a permit, but he won't listen to me. But I don't want to rat him out." And I'm already like talking, "Okay, well, where is it? Where is it?" And so, you know, here's Wade, well before his time, before drones and anything, we ended up calling the dad and said, "Hey, you know, we were kind of noticing, working with some aerial photographs, we noticed that there's a deck coming on your building." And he goes, "What? How'd you know that?" And fortunately, everything worked out right for the better. But it's just one of those creative approaches to try to help people...
That's great.
...work through the system. And then, you know, the building codes implying and working with the public is one thing, but he also added this flavor to the organization and the department, that connection, both externally as well as internally. And just kind of name a few things, because if you ever know Wade, Wade goes all out on anything. So instrumental, we had the Christmas food drives. Everybody was wanting to be on Wade's team, because that's where, you know, you'd get the free pizza party for winning. And I don't know, combined total of the years, probably brought in 25, 30,000 pounds of food...
Probably.
...for the local food bank.
Probably.
Also, well, as the Seahawks got into the playoffs and that big rush, hey, we had to celebrate that, plus that's a holiday. Wade organized the Seahawk Christmas tree, I think with Jeff Cooks was helping with that, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then, you know, the pumpkin carving contest and all those different things. And so...and then on a personal note, I don't know if you remember this, but he's also a little bit of a prankster. Can't help himself. And there was one time where I had some ankle surgery, and I'm laid, cupped up, you know, on the couch, and I get this phone call from this doctor telling me about, "Oh, we saw your x-rays, and we missed something." And I'm sitting there going, "What?" And then all of a sudden, the chuckle comes across, and here's Wade. So I want to just bring that up, just as what you see of Wade as genuinely working across the counter.
There's so many things that I can't do anymore, and it's good that I can't. I had this caiman alligator about two and a half feet long from Mexico.
Oh, no, 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 no.
No, no, no. All I did was...there's two things, and it's all clean. At one time, I took it and I tied it to Heidi, who was one of our people at the front line for Public Works, with a fishing string to her desk, a chair. And I had it under her desk, and she pulled her chair out, and it lunged at her, because it's on that plastic thing. And it had these wicked yellow morbid eyes. And then after that, then I took it when Sam...and I put it between your monitor and some books with the eye staring at you. And you didn't notice it until I pointed it out, but it was staring at you for a couple of weeks.
No more stories. I'll get to tell a story. But as you can see, we've had a lot of fun over the years.
Yeah.
We've worked really closely together on projects. The...any other thing, too, and it's another testament, is I think, was it two weeks ago, at the holiday party at OMB? OMB honored and recognized Wade for his years of service. Also, I don't mean how many years ago now, but also, OMB also awarded Community Economic Development with an award for service, and a lot of that had to do with the whole team and Wade. We always made sure we kept prizes with OMB and kept them in form of things we're doing so we can build that collaboration. I think that's a lot of testament to the work that Wade has done over the years and making sure we had that connection. So, you know, not many times you have a building association come out and support the local building department the way they have, or actions council has taken because of that collaboration that Wade and we've all worked on. So I do want to thank you for all that service.
Thank you. I just feel like what I did and what everybody else does here, too, is just what our council and the people that built the city would want of us. And I think back to our little Craftsman's house that we were in until 1979, five or six departments and the police in the basement, and that can-do spirit should never leave us. I mean, we're getting bigger where we can't have six chefs in the kitchen all making the same decision, but that organic sense of where we came from, our first riding lawnmower was in 1978, and it was a used Craftsman. That's what Brad Burke told me. And they were doing backflits and cartwheels, because they were tag-teaming the home and park, that baseball field. Two guys with a push mower. And when they got that riding mower, even though it was used, they didn't care. And that was only 45 years ago, so we've come so far.
Yeah. And this community has grown, and, you know, of course, we're going to miss the all this institutional knowledge and history. But, you know, the time and seeing that things have changed in the community, just in my 25 years, but his 31 years, it's been remarkable. And we still have that small-town feel and that connection. So now to the hook is Wade really wanted his 30-year pin. And but I couldn't get him to have a reception or anything, so I said, "Okay, in order to get this, you're going to have to come to the council meeting so I can have a say a few words."
It was held hostage.
And so then this is also...and this is also the 30-year watch. And then this is something from...
Are you sure?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. And this is from Karen and I for you and I, and I really appreciate all the service and work.
Thank you, Rick.
And we want to say thank you for coming and thank you for...
Andy, I got you something that... Small and simple. You can open it if you want. It's one of 50, so it's really rare.
Is it the caiman?
Oh, wow.
It's a baseball team that my dad had a car lot back in the 70s.
Yes.
And the car lot only lasted about three years before it went out of business. But he said, "Hey, I want to have a baseball team." I was in my senior year in high school, and I want it to be really good. You've got to put a team together. And I said, "I know a bunch of people at high school. We're all graduating. We'll put a team together." And it was the first Lacey football league. And we won so many darn games, and the Lacey leader was there at so many of our games.
Wow.
And so I've got the press clippings from all the news articles my sister clipped out and kept. But so this shirt was...they were white with blue piping or blue ring around the neck and the arms. So the original is like 47, 48 years old, and I thought, "For Christmas this year, I'd make a bunch of them to kind of honor, you know, my dad, who passed away like five years ago, and then just be cool to get for gifts." And my family, too.
Well, you know, that's so amazing. You know, I've always considered my...you know, I'm a Lacey boy. You know, I was born and raised on Lacey Street in the old historic Lacey. I bought my child at home. And, you know, that's this Lacey root, like who I am as an individual, is wrapped up in my dandy with Lacey. And there's one other person I can think of that shares sort of that same bond, and that's Wade Duffy. And so whenever sometime, you know, I'm going through City Hall, you know, if I'm lucky, I'll corner my eye, I'll see Wade, and we'll stop and talk. And I love all the stories, because this is Lacey's history. This is who we are as a community. And he just represents that so much. He's like a brother in that circumstance. And Wade, like I said, it is going to be impossible to replace you, but your imprint on this community runs so deep.
Thank you.
And you have so much to be proud of. And I just want...
Thank you.
And I can do more stories for another time, but it'll take too long. But I do want to...I almost forgot. I want to recognize the Community Economic Development Team that came out also to recognize Wade. They had a nice little lunch last week.
I'm going to miss everybody so much, the team. I forgot your names. It's only been a week.
That happens, Wade. That happens.
No hard feelings.
And also, I think there's members of the building community and public here, too, who can recognize. So I want to recognize everybody for coming out and thank you all for being here tonight. So...
Yeah, thank you, everybody.
So this is a...turned out to be a really emotional day. There's a...unfortunately, we're saying a lot of goodbyes, and I guess that can happen at the end of a year. But in this circumstance, there's several key situations where we're having to say goodbye. And obviously, Wade is, you know, part of Lacey's history. But I also want to recognize Councilmember Kunkel for his years of, you know, his term on the City Council. We go way back. I was actually graduated with his brother, and so I've known the Kunkel family for a long time. And I also know how much he cares about this community. And it's really hard to put yourself out there and run for City Council. There's a lot of hard work that goes into that. And then, once you get elected, the work is even harder, right? Because it's a really, unfortunately, all the time, a thankless job. You get blamed for a lot. You have to respond to all the emails and the people who are upset, and usually, it's mostly out of your control, but you have to do your best. And I know that Ed did respond to a lot of those emails, and I know how much he cares about this city and his time here. So we had a little sign that we...that we put together for Ed, Ed Kunkel, leaving Lacey, and, "But thank you for your service." And it's his time he spent on the council from 2019 to 2023. And of course, it's signed by a lot of members here, of course, City Council and other people here at the City of Lacey. So Ed, we can come up. I just want to...
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the same words.
And here's your sign.
Yeah.
If you want to say just a couple of words on your...
Yeah, sure. Absolutely. Well, to the folks that are here, we did have a little preemptive party before our council meeting today. And I'll say to you all what I had said to the staff in the room. You know, it's been an enlightening experience. I've learned a lot about the City of Lacey. Hasn't always been great, and it hasn't always been bad. But I have a great appreciation for our staff. They work really hard to keep this city running, and we have some very talented, very heart-minded people that run this city in the background. And my hat goes off to each and every one of you. And my hat goes off to, well, most of the council. Now, I love you all. I know that we didn't always agree. We didn't always see eye to eye. But like what the mayor was saying, it takes a lot out of you to run for public office, and it is a demanding and thankless job. And if you have the capacity to hang in there and do it, then you have my respect.
Thank you.
You may not have my vote, but you still have my respect.
Thank you.
God bless. Merry Christmas.
Okay. So next up on our agenda is public comment. We didn't have anyone pre-sign up for public comment. Is there anyone wishing to address this council? Seeing none, then we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is under ordinances, ordinance 1652, the Reserve Destination Ordnance. Troy.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. Good evening, Council. I do want it noted that my two items tonight are a reason to celebrate, too, but it looks different than the Finance Department. It looks all like this. It looks all like this. But I'm happy to be here to present the committed reserves for the council. The governmental accounting standard board, excuse me, 54, defines five different categories for our reserve designations. The first in which we'll be talking about tonight is the committed reserves. These include fund balances that are resources that are constrained by the highest decision-making level of our government, which of course is you, the city council. The other designation this ordinance relates to is the assigned reserves. These are slightly lower, but still important. These are reserves that are intended for specific purposes. And in the past, the city council has designated the authority to designate reserves as assigned to the city manager and finance director. We did have a detailed discussion last week at the work session to talk about all of these reserves. We feel the reserves before you tonight for consideration do match the council's vision, also match the community priorities. I won't go through the entire list again, but I do want to highlight a few because we do have a lot of reasons to be proud and to celebrate. These reserves include significant amounts for the new police station facility, the development of Phase 1A of Great Cuyahoga Park. There's a number of transportation priorities that are identified. There are economic development investments. There's funds in there for police staffing, social services, most notably mental health and social service outreach team and the rapid response team. And there are a number of reserves that will help us with future repairs and equipment replacement. So again, a very robust list. Again, I think it does match the council vision and community priorities. So I would recommend that you adopt this ordinance establishing these reserves as committed and also designate the city manager and finance director with the authority to designate reserves as assigned. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or if you do have any questions about some of the details within the committed reserves, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can I get a motion, please?
Yeah, I would move to adopt ordinance number 1652, establishing fund balance designations as provided by governmental accounting standards board, statement number 54, and approving a summary of publication.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Is there any discussion? We discussed it the last week. Went through all this last week in the work session and I think we answered most of our questions then. So all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. We've adopted ordinance 1652. Now on to ordinance 1653, our 2024 budget.
Great. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor. For your consideration tonight is the final stage of the development of the 2024 budget. This is the ordinance that will establish our revenue and expenditure levels for the next year. In total, the 2024 budget is $303.6 million. The general fund proposed budget is $87.5 million. These are significant increases over the current year. The main changes have to do with increasing levels in capital investments, most notably the police station, Great Cuyahoga Park. There are a number of transportation and utility capital projects. But also note that within this proposed budget, we do have workforce enhancements to help us better serve the community. You know, I've said this during the public hearing, I, you know, I'm very thankful to be presenting this budget to you. I think it's a budget to be proud of. It does address our increasing service demands. We are a growing community. It preserves our infrastructure investments, so there's a lot of repair and rehab dollars included in this budget. We are continuing to meet our capital project requirements. There are various regulations and growth that we're trying to address. I think this is a budget that addresses the council priorities and I think maybe most importantly, continues to help plan our community for the future. So again, I think this is a budget to be proud of. I certainly want to recognize the city council and city managers' leadership and guidance throughout this process. Of course, my fellow directors and all of their staff and of course, the finance department for just the countless hours that went into this document. And again, it's, I'm proud to suggest that you adopt next year's budget.
Can I get a motion?
I would move to adopt the 2024 budget ordinance number 1653, setting the total budget amount of $303,609,232 and the general fund total budget amount of $87,482,207.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Just comments or-
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I think it's on. I reviewed it multiple times and I think the thing that I'm happiest to see in it is the reinvestment into the city. I know that, you know, some of the places that we pulled dollars from, you know, it kind of stung a little bit at first, but after the realization soaked in that this has to happen and we don't really want to go out and bond for it, you know, it, we all kind of settled on it and said, you know what, this is, this is the right thing to do. I know that, you know, adopting the utility and the water rates over, you know, longer periods of time was, was one of those things that we struggled with as a team, but we got it done and I think that also helps this budget. So I, I'm really kind of happy about this in that we've, we've, we've kind of set ourselves up to, to be able to grow at a better pace and be able to provide, you know, all the services that we promised and be able to, to, you know, I'm really excited about the new police station. I'm really excited about the new park. I'm really excited about the attraction that's going to come to this area. I think with these, these investments, we're going to see growth, the kind of growth and grow in the kind of way that we want to grow without growing so far out that we can't manage and become what we've seen some other cities become, for lack of a better way to say it. So, so thank you for all of your hard work.
Councilperson McKinnon.
I just want to say thank you to you, Troy, and the entire staff. You know, the amount of work that goes into this is obviously tremendous and it's probably the single most important vote we take as a council every year because it guides everything we do, right? If it's not in the budget, we can't do it. So I just want to say thank you for all the hard work that goes into this to everyone on the staff because I'm very happy to be able to vote for this budget. It looks great.
Anyone else? Well, this is my, my 14th year of passing budgets here in the city of Lacy. And we always say, if you, if you want to look at what your priorities are of a, of a city, look at its budget. And what this budget tells us is that we're continuing to invest in the things that our community expects, right? I mean, we just heard earlier today about, you know, what makes Lacy, look, you know, look at streets. We have great, you know, utilities. We've grown so much as a community and exponentially so over the past decade, but we still have that small feel, you know, town feel. You know, we, our neighbors are important to us and the places we go and communicate and meet up with people, that's what makes a community. And if you look at this budget, you know, it invests in the things that really matter most to, to a lot of us. And we've had some tough budgets over the years, right? We really have. And if you sort of have your ear out and you're talking to other communities, you know, other communities are sort of struggling right now. They've, they've, this has been a tough year with inflation and everything else. But if you look at this budget, right, we don't have cuts in this budget. Our revenues has still, you know, they haven't grown maybe like they have in years past, but they, they've continued to grow. And that tells you a lot about your community. Tells you a lot about this council. And it's not just one year. It is a concerted effort to have good policies in place, to have the Wade Duffys, right, that represent you and invites you to invest in this community. That's how you grow. Focus on small business. Focus on, you know, your residents and the things that they want and need. And this budget does that. So a big shout out, big thank you to our staff. We have the best staff. They work hard. It's, it's thankless job as well, you know? We, we are up here and, yeah, we get a lot of the blame, but we also are recognized as well and the staff aren't nearly as recognized. And from public works to finance, our police department, the best in the state of Washington, I'd say that without doubt. Our parks and this investment we continue making on our parks is absolutely amazing. And so I'm so proud of our staff. I'm so proud of the city and I'm proud to support this budget. And with that, there's been a motion.
Mayor, if I can? I just want to say, you know, whether it's inflation, recession, or pandemic, or whatever the challenges have been in 14 years or your four years, we can handle it because we have, we were responsible, try to be as responsible as possible with the taxpayers' money. That's what it all boils down to, no matter what side of the aisle you use, you know, which, that you're on, if you're responsible when it comes to people's money, then the trust will always be there. There's always a common ground where we can find a solution to anything.
And with that, there is a motion in the second to adopt our 2024 budget. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. So next on is ordinance 1654, our flood hazard prevention amendments.
Good evening, council. Tonight I'm here with the amendments to our flood hazard prevention code, chapter 1434 of the Lacy municipal code. The regulations in 1434 are required by the federal government to allow, to allow property owners to participate in the national flood insurance program. By participating in the NFIP, affected property owners have the ability to purchase federally-backed flood insurance. Lacy, like all jurisdictions that participate in the NFIP, is required to adopt regulations that dictate when and how development can occur in the floodplains. This is a bit of a redundant code because we are also required to regulate floodplains through our critical areas ordinances or critical areas codes. In fact, Lacy actually prohibits all development within, all new development within the floodplain, which far exceeds any federal standard requirements for the flood insurance program. However, we are required to have these regulations in place to maintain eligibility for the program. It's also worth noting for context that floodplain areas within Lacy are extremely limited and are largely located directly around our lakes and some of the associated wetland complexes as well as along Woodland Creek. In fact, in the 40-plus years that the city of Lacy has participated in the NFIP, we have only had three claims to date totaling just a little over $8,000, so $8,000. So it's not a significant impact to our citizens, but it's an important, important benefit that the city can continue to maintain coverage for its participants. So despite this limited application, Lacy still is required to adopt flood hazard regulations and to periodically amend them for compliance with, to maintain consistency with the NFIP standards. The current slate of proposed amendments are all considered mandatory changes and were provided to us, and were provided to the city by our Department of Ecology liaison. These floodplain development permits, or excuse me, these amendments largely consist of sort of housekeeping amendments. There's some updates or some new definitions, some amended definitions, updates to performance standards that are intended to prevent flood damage, keeping in mind again that we don't actually allow development in the floodplains. So the planning commission did conduct a public hearing on the amendments to chapter 1434 back in October 17th. No public testimony was received and the planning commission unanimously voted to recommend approval of the amendments to the city council at the close of that hearing. With that, staff in the planning commission are recommending that the, that ordinance 1654 be approved, adopting the required amendments to LMC chapter 1434. And with that, I am happy to answer any questions if council has any.
Any questions? Can I get a motion?
I would move that we adopt ordinance 1654, amending Lacy municipal code 1434 flood hazard prevention to meet the requirements of the national flood insurance program.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? We need to do this by law so we can protect our residents in these areas, so, yeah. Any other discussion?
We don't build in floodplains, but if we ever do, we will follow these rules. It's on record.
That's true. All in favor of adopting this ordinance, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Then that motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. So next up, under the mayor's report, I have just two items. My first item is to, a reapportment to the planning commission. Karen McMichael is through her first term and I'm, I move that we reappoint her to the planning commission. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
She's awesome.
She's amazing. Then all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And you want to post? That motion unanimously carries. Next up is appointments to the first term for the planning commission. We've had, we had three openings right now and it's been very difficult actually for the, the planning commission to try to meet and meet their quorums and everything else when we've been down three members. You know, I've, in some of these positions been open for, for a little while. I was worried I wasn't getting enough applicants and then all of a sudden, we got a bunch of great applicants. And so we, we met and went through all the applications and it was, it was really tough this time. There were some really good applicants there that you had, we had to make decisions on. But after all the discussion, there is a consensus on, on three candidates, which is Elliot Kirk, Tanya Moore, and Spencer Zeeman. And it's my motion that we appoint them to our planning commission. Is there a second?
I will second.
It's, it's been moving to second. Is there any discussion? And all in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose? Then that motion carries. And we have appointed, Tanya is here and Spencer is here as well and thank you for volunteering your time to our planning commission. As we talked about, you guys are going to be an integral part of our decision-making that we are going forward, especially as we're going through our new comp plan, which is a big deal. And our planning commission does a lot of work and so I just want to thank you for volunteering your time to this. It really means a lot to our community. So, so thank you for, and thank you for being here. Yes.
Congratulations.
And with that-
And thank you.
And with that, I will go on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor and city council. And tonight I have one item on the city manager report, which is the contract award for Public Works Project 2022-13 for the new police station. One of Ashley Smith up, our design and construction manager, will present the recommended bid award as well as some background. And again, just to remind council, this is a big, a big project and it's a project that's been identified as a significant need for, for the city for quite some time as we've saw with our existing police department and the age of that facility and how we've outgrown that space. And I know some of the council members have been through that space to see what kind of, what it's currently like and why we need this need. And so after several years of design and planning and getting to the point, we're ready to present the bid, recommended bid award and provide some background and then now we're up for the council to take action tonight to award a contract. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ashley.
Good evening. I'm here to recommend a ward for the long anticipated construction contract for the new police station. The project budget for this, for this project is $61.5 million and that includes the police station only. There's a subsequent design for the training facility, which I'll go into a little more detail on. We opened bids for this project on November 16th after seven weeks of advertisement. Sorry? And there were seven bidders that responded. So the recommendation from staff tonight is for council to award Lacy contract number Public Works 2022-13, which is the base bid plus alternates 1A, 1B, 1C, and 1D to low bidder forma construction from Olympia, Washington in the amount of $43 million, excuse me, $43,697,070. This project has been in front of council a few times with varying cost estimates. There's a summary here of the various stages as we've progressed throughout this project, including the funding strategy that was approved in April 2023 by council. And I just wanted to reiterate some of the fluctuation that was resulting from the escalated costs that we saw primarily through 2020 and 2021. that we saw primarily through 2020 and 2021 during COVID, which now have leveled out to a more predictable level, as you can see in the graph that's shown there. So the new police station is to be located just adjacent here to City Hall on the corner of College and Third Avenue. We recently purchased that property from St. Martin's Abbey. And as you can see on the map there on the right, it's just north of City Hall with the new police station on the existing campus or the newly expanded campus. And then the future training facility is all the way to the north. Kind of a long I five there. This project also includes a connection to Sixth Avenue for emergency egress for police officers and emergency, other emergency response. And the base bid contract provides for a $48,604 square foot main facility. This is two stories. And that includes a new 1,600 square foot community space with future EOC capability for the city. And then also the alternates provide the option for a $14,934 one-story training facility. This design is programmed to support the police department's operational needs through the next 20 years and the capability to expand in the future as needed. So this is a conceptual drawing of the plans you just saw on the previous slide. Again, you can see where the City Hall campus connects on the other side of Third Avenue there with the main police facility centrally located, a secure parking area, which is separated from the front-facing public parking area. And then the training facility is included on the same campus. This view is from the back secure lot where you can see the police ready line would be covered under that roof structure. And then over to the right, this shows the proximity between the police training building that is also programmed. And then this last view is visual inside the public facing lobby. You can see there's a lot of natural light and open space in comparison to the current station. Okay, so there are three bid alternates included in this project advertisement. We completed the full design of the training building, included that in the advertisement in the event that prices were favorable and we could move to award this as well. So it's been fully permitted and vested as has the original building. So it is shovel ready if council decides to award it. Bid alternate 1A includes the shell or envelope of the building. That's the area you see outlined in red there. And also full buildout of the electrical room, fire riser room, and IDF room so that it could be partially occupied under that phase if desired. And by partially occupied, it'd be like open, an open warehouse space, not finished at all. And then in the blue, you can see there alternate 1B, which includes the firing range and supporting rooms. And that's an eight-lane firing range for police training and certification as well as ammunition locker, gun cleaning, et cetera. Bid alternate 1C includes the simulation room and that's for a digital training simulator to be housed there permanently along with, you know, supporting storage spaces, defensive tactics, equipment and storage, and then supporting staff spaces such as restrooms in that building. And then bid alternate 1D, which is the last one under this facility, is the training classroom. And that could house the entire police staff for a training event or regional partners, as well as be divided into flexible use spaces for city staff as well. Bid alternate one, excuse me, two and three are not recommended at this time. They can be completed totally independent of this project at a later date. Okay. So a broad overview of this project. There are two potential low bidders. Neely Construction is the low bidder if only the base bid, the main building is awarded. However, if any of the alternates are awarded tonight, Forma Construction is the low bidder in all cases. The low bidder for the base bid only was $34,525,350, including tax. And then the engineer's estimate was $43,344,480, including tax. So you can see we've got a considerable savings on what was estimated previously. There are 445 working days provided in the contract, which equates to approximately 22 months from breaking ground. And they are ready to begin in January 2024. So tonight, staff recommendation is to award the base contract for the main facility as well as alternates 1A, 1B, 1C, and 1D. This would fully construct the training building at the competitive prices we're seeing now and utilize the potential for training and collaboration between regional and local law enforcement. If council does not opt to award the full training building and full alternate one this evening, our second recommendation is to award the base contract plus alternate 1A, which as mentioned previously would be the, excuse me, the shell and envelope of that building and then finish the associated site work concurrent with the construction of the main building. So on the slide, you'll see a summary of the project costs between those two recommended options, including the maximum allowable construction cost for the facility as well as project soft costs. And then you'll see as, in both scenarios, under the project total, they're within the allotted budget. Yes, council member.
What's a soft cost?
Soft costs include sales tax, design, furniture and equipment, land purchased, all of those items. So with the project budget standing at roughly $61.5 million today, you can see either of these options are an option for you tonight. Included in those soft costs is also a 10% contingency against construction change orders. There's a side note. Staff is recommending proceeding with at least the shell of the training building up to all four, all four tiers of that to minimize construction operations if that were constructed at a later date while that facility is occupied. You can see in that photo how close in proximity the two are to each other. So it would be a major disruption to construct later. It's located behind the secure parking line for police operations as well. And then, of course, with the favorable bidding climate we have now, there's a considerable savings that we could realize today instead of waiting for cost escalation at some undetermined point in the future when funding became available. There are also, there is also some risk if this alternate were delayed until a later date of design revisions necessary as code requirements change over time. And so the, the project meets the current energy and building codes right now. But if it were delayed for an extended period, that may need some updating. So that's a factor to consider. And with that, I will leave it open for any additional questions.
I would move to award Lacey Contract Number PW 2022-13 base bid plus bid alternates 1A, 1B, 1C, and 1D to low bidder Forma Construction from Olympia in the amount of $43,697,070.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Let's have some discussion. Go ahead.
I mean, we, we were expecting this to be in the $60 million range. I think it only makes sense to go forward with the full project, including the training center. I think it'll be a huge regional asset. I think we'll get a lot of participation and probably recoup some of the costs between some, either from the state or from our other local jurisdictions that are going to all clearly want to use this facility because there's nothing like it in the area. So I think this is, makes good sense for us to do this now.
Councilor.
Just on that note, it's not going to get cheaper, right? This is, this is a need that we have in the region. And if we wait, we shouldn't hold our breath that construction costs will get cheaper or that changes to code will make things cheaper. That, that doesn't happen. So it makes sense that if we have the funding now, we should do it now.
It's a terrible idea to do it later.
Councilor.
Eight bidders, most of them local. And I've had, I've done business with Bailey Construction and Andy Johnson and Forma and formidable, I mean, competitive bids and $10 million savings pretty much at, you know, 10, 10 million right off the top. So, I mean, this makes sense.
So when we, when we start, I didn't think we were going to get the training center into that number. And here we are, a year and a half later and the, all of it comes together at the, the number that we, we had kind of hoped for. So I, I think having a training center, there's only two other ones, right? There's, there's, there's the one in Burien and then there's, there's one in Pasco. Yeah. And so this will be the third in the state. So.
Yeah. Yeah, that's. There's a lot of things that need to fall into place for that to actually happen. But you're right. I do want to take a historical step back on, on how we got, how we got here. I remember back in 2019, right after we got the needs assessment that was done, our former city manager, Scott Spence, called, you know, called me in the office. He goes, man, I need to talk to you about something. And it's never a good feeling when your city manager said, you know, especially Scott, when he sort of is like, oh, I need to talk to you about something. I'm like, oh, jeez, what is it? You know, something bad's happening. And he's like, we need to build a new police station. We got the needs assessment. He was like, we need to build a new police station. And, you know, even early on talks, the goal for this police station was about $42 million. And that was going to be a big stretch even back then. It was like, $42 million, how are we going to build a facility like this for $42 million? As we went on and that this council, that my, my first, you know, I think I talked to Scott. It's like, where's this going to be? Well, we're hoping it can be right here on, on our campus. I go, well, then first things first, let's go talk to St. Martin's and see if they'd be willing to sell us some property. Because if they say no, you know, I'm not sure what we're going to do. We're going to have to have some more conversations. And so we did, we reached out to St. Martin's and they were receptive. And this council was very supportive from the get-go. It said, okay, let's see if we can, so we can lock up the land first. And thank you, St. Martin's University, for being a great partner with the city of Lacey. We went through that process. We did, you know, fair market value. We got the property. It's been a win-win so far with our relationship. But then you have to remember, we were thinking it was going to be about a $42 million facility, all in at the time. Then we started going through design, right? And now we're going through COVID. And now we're, you know, as, as long as we're, as we're going, the price just kept going up and up and up. And each step along the way, you know, the conversations were had with the finance director and city manager and, and, you know, it's like, what, you know, can we afford to do this? You know, and you have to remember, there was, there was, there was a time where it was going to be recommended that we were going to have to go out and do a public ask. And that, you know, concerned me a little bit because if you do a public ask and it fails, you still need the facility, right? And so now you're behind the eight ball and the public didn't support, especially when it comes to property taxes. Those things are always tricky. And we felt like we had the support, but man, someone's going to have to put on a big campaign. And it, it just felt like that was going to be taking a risk. And so really, because of the, the hard work that this council passed, has done and the, the finance practices of this city, we looked at it and said, okay, you know, year, you know, into 2019, into 21, 22, we kept sort of looking at where we're at when it came to our finances and our reserves. And we had money in reserves for other things that we said, okay, yeah, I know this has been in an assigned reserve, but let's, let's move it out and move it over because this is a very important project. And so that's through all that. And then we've done gangbusters in REIT, right? For, for, in this community, we've seen a tremendous mile growth in this community. And every time a transaction happens, we had, there's REIT dollars. And of course, we've been setting that money aside for arterial street funds. And that has built up and built up and built up. And so how we're paying for this is we're taking the excess of money out of arterial street funds, reserves that we've built up on it and we're putting over this project, that big, big, big chunk. And then we're assigning future REIT to, to pay off the bonds that we're going to do on this. And so, you know, we've gone through this process. At one point, we were going to have, the train facility was a part of the whole building. And we just realized there's just no way, way, the way bids were going, where we're going through the process, that we were going to be able to do that. So we said, well, okay, let's, let's take it out of the original design. Let's put it in its own building. And maybe if we get lucky, we could maybe build a shell or I don't know. But we'll, you know, we'll see how it goes. That's where I thought we were, this council was at. Decision-making this council was going to be at like three weeks ago, right? And then Rick calls me in and says, I need to talk to you about something. And it's like, I, I, jeez, the bids came in and now we have to talk about this regional train facility, 15,000 square feet, which is a big deal. Not, that's not just a Lacey asset, right? That is a regional asset that's for a community, possible state patrol. I mean, this whole idea of all the, all the new training requirements on our law enforcement and the fact that they have to go up to Burien and there's a whole bunch of ways that makes it very inconvenient to get into law enforcement. This could be a really big asset. But this is an asset for the, outside just the city of Lacey, right? This is an asset that we're billing for the entire region. And this is somewhat unexpected. We didn't think we were going to quite be here. And so now we have to make a decision. There's a motion to second that I am supporting, that we're going to build this when we still haven't quite secured the funding for the trainers that we need to actually do the training that makes it all work for it to be a regional asset. And so that's why, right after the bids came in, we were like, wow, we better start talking to our regional partners and seeing, you know, is everyone on board with them having this asset there? And, you know, and it being, also becoming a priority for them? You know, we, we had our, the Thurston County Regional Coalition, the Chamber. This was something that was talked about as a possibility. And sure enough, we actually have a location of building, we could build it. And so there's been a lot of work that's been happening behind the scenes in the past two weeks, two, three weeks. And I just wanted to really thank Rick, our, our city manager, to having to turn on a dime and reach out to our regional partners and say, hey, there's this opportunity, but if Lacey is going to build it, we really hope, you know, there's some expectation you guys are going to also use it. You're going to contract with us. We're going to figure this out together, even though like this is a handshake deal, right? Because we don't have anything in place. And so there's been, so far, it's been very well received from all of our, our partners. And I do think we have a lot of really amazing opportunities that we are going to be able to hopefully see come to fruition over this next year after this is approved and we can sort of take the next step into seeing if we can get some, hopefully some help with reimbursement for some of the, the training that needs to happen. There's also some, some equipment, you know, we're, we're footing the bill on all this and it's going to be helping the entire region and state. And so we still have some work left to do here. We are taking a little bit of a risk for the benefit of, I'd say, not only Lacey, but, you know, law of Western Washington, southwest Western Washington, that's for, for sure. But this is really, I think, once in a lifetime opportunity. It's like when you've gone through it all and how we got here, yeah, it went from $42 million to now $60, $61. But we have the reserves in place. We've, we, we've sort of earned this through, you know, a lot of sweat equity in this community for a long time to, to get here. I'm, I am a little worried about our arterial street fund long-term. There's a lot of work, I know, understand that Public Works just said, hey, you know, they were an amazing team player in all of this. And that should not go unnoticed in this. Scott, you know, our TL Street Fund just dropped considerably. Scott, you know, our TL street fund just dropped considerably for the benefit of the entire city, right? And so, thank you, thank you for your, your department as well.
Yeah, I, I remember having a conversation in one of our work sessions over this, and I remember the chief bringing up the idea of having this training facility, and immediately my ears perked up, because I see the vision, that it's a definite need to have this along with the police station, it would be foolish for us not to include a training facility with, with the, the bigger facility. So I, I'm grateful that we're able to pull it out, and I, I know our community will round robin around it, I, I know there's, there's definitely a need. And I think it will, I, I think if you build it, they will come. I don't have any, I don't have any reservation about that.
Councilmember Greenstein?
Just one other comment, because I, I don't think it's been mentioned, but, you know, I think we are probably the only jurisdiction in this part of Washington, or maybe all of Washington, that could have built this, that could, you know, when we approve it tonight, hopefully, without having to raise a single dollar in taxes. The public is not going to see any increase in their taxes, not property tax, not sales tax, not anything. And it's because of good conservative fiscal responsible budgeting for, you know, decades, long before any of us were on council, on to now. So, you know, I think that's something we should be really proud of, that we can do this without having to raise taxes. There's not too many places that could spend $60 million without raising taxes.
That's absolutely very true, and a lot of things had to fall into place for this to happen. Like I said, we, I, I definitely wasn't expecting us to be able to do the training facility now, that's why we're sort of trying to figure this out on, on the, on the move. But we still have some work to do, we still need to get the state involved, we still need to look at other partnerships, and I know that we will be working on that. You know, city managers talked about this, who knew such favorable bid conditions could result in so much extra work? But that's where we're at. I am, you know, it's, I think we should all be proud that we, we've gotten here, yes, we have some work that we need to do. But this has really been everyone shipping in from the city. And that's, I think, at the end of the day, I hope that is what's recognized here, that it took the entire city to come together, to pull up off a project like this without going to the voters and having to raise taxes. And that is, should be commended, all the department directors, everyone that has helped us get here, you know, my thanks goes out to them, and I think this is one of those moments that sort of, you know, it goes down, will go down in history, that we were able to do this at this time, to, to what we've always wanted, right? So.
And if you've been over in that building, anytime in the last couple of years, you would see the incredible need. Our, our police department needs a new building, in a desperate kind of way.
Could I just take one second to recognize Chief Almata and Deputy Chief Hollis, both came to this community, new to this community, have picked up this ball and ran with it, and really, behind the scenes, have been helping push this thing forward. So thank you both for, for joining our community and, and getting, rolling up your sleeves, so, thank you.
If I may?
Yeah, go ahead.
It's not a surprise that keeping our debt low, paying our debt off early, good business practices, because there's several business owners on this council. And being well-rounded and responsible is the only reason why this happens. So. We, we do have, you know, some decisions that we need to continue to think about as we're going through this process. You know, as we hopefully contract with other jurisdictions, you know, where is those dollars going? Is it going to a fund that helps us pay off the REIT bonds earlier? That's something we need to talk about, you know, because we have to, it's 10 years, at least 10 years, before we can, you know, make a decision on that. The other thing is, is, you know, we, you know, this has taken up a big part of our reserves, a huge part of our reserves, and there's a ton of other needs that we have in, in, in our city as well. We've seen the capital facilities plan, that Public Works has a lot of projects, that, our Parks Department has a lot of projects. And so we need to make sure that, you know, if there are things that are coming under a budget, you know, how this all plays out, we, we, we keep, we're keeping all that in the mind as we go forward. City manager, do you want to add anything before we make a vote on this?
No, I think the council's pretty much articulated the, the importance of this project, as well as the other considerations going forward, that we're going to have to start working and rolling up our sleeves to figure out how we're going to develop a, a financial strategy that can also meet the needs of our other facilities, that we need to figure out how to, how to improve and, and expand with, with the growing community. I just want to also just reiterate my thanks to Ashley and John Swedeky in the back for project management, their consultant team, there's been a series of stakeholder folks that have been working, I don't know how, a couple of years, of going through the design and developing design, including Chief Almata and Deputy Chief Hollis, and then, you know, the old construction team, and Scott, and Troy, and Shannon, all, everybody's kind of worked on this project at some point or another to try to figure out how we can make it work. So I just want to make sure to recognize everybody that's been involved, and, and I'm sure I left somebody out, but it's been a, as it was articulated earlier, a team effort.
Okay. Well, there's been a, a motion, a second, to award this base bid, plus add alternatives 1A, 1B, 1C, and 1D to the low bidder format construction. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries. Congratulations. Is there anything else before we go on to standing in general committees?
Nope.
Okay, well, then on to our council and governmental boards. I'm up first, the, the mayor's forum, met for the last time, last Thursday, and we all got together to say goodbye to a couple of mayors that are, were no longer, you know, are going on to other things. As you know, Mayor Cheryl Selby from Olympia, this is the end of her term, I know that several of us were at her goodbye party, and we said our thank yous from the City of Lacey. Yesterday, there's also Wayne Fournier, who's the mayor of Tonino, who's now on to county commission, so he is no longer the, the mayor of Tonino. And so, we all got together and told some really good stories of, of the time, and it was a, really been a, a great group to work with, and, you know, we met the, or, you know, added on the new mayor of Olympia, joined us for the meeting, and so we're going to know Dante Payne a little bit more, look forward to working with him. And so, that was the, the mayor's forum. The Thurston Chamber Shared Legislative Committee, I had mentioned this a couple times, we met, was it last Tuesday? Before, but. Yeah, I, I, all my days have come together. And again, this is when we were, you know, have talked about one of our, our shared priorities, is the strain facility, and, and that was the first time we sort of started talking to our regional partners about this opportunity, along with our state legislature, then the, the three cities, then also met, we discussed this a little bit more last Friday. But the, that legislative committee is, you know, works together with all the, the jurisdictions here, and the, the chamber help leads it, and we try to come up with things that we can work on together as a region, and the, the main ones, as you can imagine, is continued work on I-5, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done, continued to be done there. You know, this was a, something that we talked about, and that the continued work on the Ag Park and Tonino, and so, there's some, there's some really great things happening in our community, and it's a, it's been nice to have that opportunity to, you know, sit down with dinner and talk to our, our state legislature representatives during that. And then the, the transportation policy board did meet last Wednesday. Again, we said a couple goodbyes, or recognized Don Melnick and Joe Downing for their service on the transportation policy board. We also reappointed Pete Kmet as our emeritus representative. Pete was former mayor of Tom Water, was a longtime member of the transportation policy board. We set a policy a few years ago to recognize those members who have this historical knowledge when it comes to the transportation policy board, and offer them an opportunity to stay on, even if they're no longer in their original roles on the transportation policy board as an emeritus position. And I, Pete was actually contacting me and was looking, he's, I think I'm done, but we actually have some really big things that we're going to be discussing on the policy board for next year. And I asked him as a favor to me, I've been the chair of the transportation policy board for, geez, at least 12 years. I asked him if he would stay on, because we need to get through this, this next year, and his historic knowledge would be very beneficial. The other things, we got an update with it, is, was our College Street project, and so Martin Hoppy, as we all know, came and gave a, a big update about College Street and its many years of, of being a regional priority, not only for the City of Lacey, but for the region, the history of that, he gave a good presentation. The other thing we talked about was our congestion management process update. So the Thurston Regional Planning Council, because of the size of Thurston County, is now being recognized as a transportation management area, that's just a designation with the federal government that's now given, because of we've reached a certain population threshold. With that new designation, there are new requirements for the, that we have to follow. And one of them is this, 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 geez, this congestion management program, right? Area. And so now you're looking at areas of congestion, and you have to have a plan to address them. And this is something we didn't have to do before, and so this is another example of, I think, the continued work that TRPs is having to do, it's another, like, one of those mandates that they're having to do, that you necessarily don't always get reimbursed for. But we went through this congestion mitigation plan, talked about the strategies of identifying and, and hopefully evaluating the, the impacts of congestion and, and strategies to reduce it. And then we talked about our legislative priorities, which is continuing to fund projects on I-5, including the Yell Bypass. We also, this is where we talked about all these new requirements for our, our TPOs, and the funding has basically stayed the same for the state, even though two new RTPOs have been added to our state since the, the original base funding was given to them. So there's an ask to, for that to be recognized with all the new requirements, and to increase some funding. And then also to look at NPOs, and, and this last year, they, they allowed NPOs to apply for regional, my moldy, my mobile, my boldy, my bolt, geez, I can't talk, my, my boldy, geez.
What is that, Senator?
Mobility grant. I can't, it's getting late, mobility grants, geez. Anyway, they, they were able to apply for it the first time this last year, they're at, the ask is if they continue to apply for those grants. And that's the end of my report. Deputy Mayor.
Just one quick one, I, well, I did go to the Regional Financial Expo, and I'll, I'll brief on that at another meeting. But in, in, a little closer to home, the UGA Subcommittee met yesterday at 3 o'clock, and the, the countywide planning policies needed to be updated, where there's an amendment that needs to happen. The amendments are based on House Bill 1717 and Senate Bill 5593. 1717 requires that we, you know, invite the, the tribe to, to all of these planning committee meetings, anything that's going to happen. And more specifically, it recommends the amendments to the countywide planning policies to include, add a statement clarifying that Thurston County includes reservations and/or ceded lands of the confederated tribes of the Chehalis Reservation and Medicine Creek Treaty tribes, including Nisqually, Puyallup, and Squawson. And we will be adding a preamble. There's, there's also a section in there, in the Senate bill, that, that specifically deals with what we call land swaps. So, you know, adding to the UGA, or swapping land through, through the UGA. And so, but prior to us, you know, sending that up to the Board of County Commissioners, those, those amendments and the verbiage for those amendments will be reviewed by this body before we do any recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, so we will see those on a future work session. Another agenda item was, there are a couple of parcels that are looking to be added to the UGA, there were three of them. One of, one of them is, is, the most popular one is the, the Black Hills Gravel Pit, you guys may be familiar with that. They are wanting to be added to, to the UGA. I, that one did pass, and I was, I was, the, the owner of the gravel pit, you know, kind of explained it, because I wanted to know, you know, what's, what's your motivation for, for wanting to, wanting to do this? You're going to stop mining, and you're going to turn this into residential, tell me a little bit more about that. And it, it appears as though they've mined down to a level where that if they go any lower, everything they pull out has to be replaced with another product. So, so it, it's not that they can't make any more money on it, it's just that if they do continue mining that land, they have to take from another pit and refill it. So at this point, for the benefit of the entire county and the entire community, that, that space will be now turned into housing for, to, to kind of fit and suit some of our housing needs. That was also the case with one other property, called the Wilmowski property, it will also become housing, high density, higher density housing. There was one property that didn't make it, it was called the Deskins property, and the reason why it didn't make it, because it won't have any, in the next 20 years, there won't be any, you know, power sewer water going to, to that, to that parcel, or any of those parcels in, in that section. So it didn't check all the boxes that would allow it to, to be brought into, into the UGA. And that is my report.
Thank you. Mobility. Councilmember Greenstein?
Just one report. Emergency Medical Services met yesterday afternoon, and just a couple of things from that meeting. One, their budget for '24 was approved by the Board of County Commissioners as, as, as presented, so that was really good news. New ALS Program Manager starts on January 2nd, that's a long-awaited position, we've had an opening there for quite a long time, and our directors had to do double duty, and it'll be a huge help to have that position filled. Last week, we graduated 15 people from an EMT class, so who are now going into the system, so that's very helpful. We voted to form a new committee to review and rewrite the bylaws, and I was asked to chair that committee, so that'll be an ongoing effort for the next several months, but our, we found that our bylaws were written, oh, 15-plus years ago, and have not been reviewed in that timeframe, and there's been a lot of changes in the county, as you can imagine, particularly now with the new, now being five commissioners, if we don't make some changes, it's going to exponentially grow the council and make it very difficult to make quorum and that kind of thing, because it adds four new positions to that council. And then lastly, just because I thought you might find it interesting, the new ED that opened, the freestanding emergency room that opened here in Lacey, in its first five days, had 15 EMS transports to the facility, so 15 that would have been transported to either St. Pete's or Capital Medical Center, were actually transported there instead. And they're, from that facility, because one of the things we had been concerned about with a freestanding ED that doesn't have a hospital attached, is how many people then need to be transported from there to a hospital. And in the first five days, there were actually nine transports from that facility out to either Providence or MultiCare. So, that is my report.
Is that what was expected, or how are you feeling about that number?
Yeah, it's, it's hard to say yet, because they're not at full capacity yet. So their estimate that they gave us, and they, they have seven other of these freestanding emergency rooms, so it's not new to MultiCare, they estimate about 3% of the patients that come there wind up having to be transported. They have hired a private, in fact, we just approved their licensing today in another meeting, for a new transport company. So it, it won't affect our system, because they have, they have their own transport ambulance company that's going to be there to actually make these inter- company that's going to be there to actually make these inter, inter facility transfers.
Oh.
So it won't have that big an effect on our system.
If I could just add kind of a little foreshadowing, too, with the MultiCare facility coming online, and efforts made by Providence, as well as Fire District 3 and EMS. We're going to schedule for the, right now for the March 12th, we're going to schedule a work session where we'll have Darren Goss, the CEO of Providence, Will Calico, Calico, CEO of MultiCare, Chief Brooks, and EMS come back and talk about, year in review, because they approached the council and had a briefing and conversation last year at a work session talking about the issues, and now they want to kind of give an update of where they are and making progress to provide those services to the community, so.
That'll be great, yeah. Another subcommittee that I sit on, for EMS, I sit on several subcommittees, but one is, we're, we're actually working on a long-term comprehensive plan. And over the last several months, we've actually had Darren from Providence and the CEO of MultiCare and Behavioral Health Hospital, and the private ambulance companies, all come in and give pretty in-depth presentations on what they're currently doing and what their future plans look at like, because all of that integrates into how the pre-hospital EMS system works. So we're working on that, and it's been an interesting project, but I'll bring back more as we get the new comprehensive plan written.
Great. Councilmember Stedman.
I don't have a report, but I did want to say that, you know, we have a Spirit of Lacey Award, but the real spirit of Lacey lies in people like Ed or Wade Duffy. And we just welcome three more to the spirit, if you will, that are going to be great and bring people, that welcoming atmosphere that, you know, no, no problem's too big if we, if we're all committed and invested together and we all care, willing to work towards a common goal. And that's what it's really about. So, you know, it, it's sad seeing Wade go. I've known him for a lot of years, not as long as you, Mayor, but, you know, he's been consistent from day one. He's been the same passionate, caring person that the city's been, has been, you know, come, has, has been known for, for decades. So I just want to say that. It's nice that we give out a Spirit of Lacey Award, and it's, it's really, it's a, it's pretty and all that stuff, but it's really the people, it's the spirit.
I agree. Councilmember Cox.
I have two short reports tonight. You know, it's not often that the power company pays you, but that's the case with LOT, the Lacey Olympia Tumwater Thurston County Clean Water Alliance. They've been making improvements to their biological improvements building, and it's resulted in dramatically reduced power consumption, to the point of energy savings of over, almost 2.5 million kilowatt hours a year, enough to power 322 homes for a year. So it's pretty impressive savings, and it was really special to be there and see them presented a $1.1 million grant from Puget Sound Energy for their savings. So I felt really good about that. And then we turned around and spent money. Awarded a $658,000 award to Gray and Osborne of Seattle to provide rehab engineering support contract on the Centrate Building. And spending some money in Lacey, they, we approved a $160,775 rebate for the Tomy Park Estates Septic to Sewer Project from LOT's Septic Conversion Support Program. So I was pleased that we could have that. And I, I would like to just give a shout out to Matt Cannelli and his staff for the kindness and hospitality they have shown me. I'm Chair of the Regional Housing Council, and our meetings the last two months have gone right to the edge of LOT meetings, and they're remote. And so they've invited me to come and use their conference room and their fancy TV facilities and all that in order to be able to chair these meetings and then go straight into a LOT meeting. And you don't see that many places, so I, I just really wanted to give them a shout out for that, that wonderful support. The Regional Housing Council met on the 13th of December, and our council already heard at our workshop last week, the, the big presentation they gave on housing need allocations in Thurston County. We are required by law now to plan for and accommodate all economic segments of the population, ranging from the, you know, lowest, very lowest income there is to, all the way to very high-priced housing. And although the private sector builds most of this housing, jurisdictions must have policies and plans in place, and they must be collaborative within the county. So we contracted with the Thurston Regional Planning Council to come up with staff recommended allocations, which they have done, and now the next steps are presenting to jurisdictions, which just happened last week with our council. And then it goes back to the Thurston Regional Planning Council for improvements, and then we can document this in our comp plan, and it just all works out very nicely time-wise for that. So we also got a report or an update on manufactured home parks. We had been approached by an organization that was trying to support a mobile home park called Claudius in Thurston County that was going to be built, bought by investors, and it was looking as if it was going to be very difficult for the residents there to pay the increased rent. And even if they could get the money to purchase the park themselves, the high interest rates would have made their rents high. And it just, that, that has not worked out for them, unfortunately. But we did agree that, under new state law, which requires owners to provide notification when they intend to sell, that we adopt a policy to try to preserve the mobile har, home parks that are existing now in Thurston County. They're one of the, you know, best alternatives for people on limited incomes. And unfortunately, you know, some of them have fallen prey already to investors who want to come in and, and either get rid of the park and turn it into other kinds of housing, or what. So I, I look forward to working on this. I think it's going to be a positive step for our community. And then finally, we received a brief on applications for the state housing trust fund money that are going to support a variety of low-income projects throughout the county, ranging from permanent supportive housing to low-income or low to moderately priced house, housing. So more to come on that yet, but it looks like a good spread, and with any luck, we'll see some of those dollars. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Kunkel.
I don't have a report. I do have a request. I'd like to get a photo op with the council, it's my last council meeting for the year, so if you could all oblige, I'd sure appreciate that.
Yeah, we'll definitely do that as soon as we adjourn. Councilmember Vasquez.
Oh, and the department heads are included, too, so.
Well, now I won't sprint out of the room as soon as my report is done. Okay. I have two quick reports. One, Orca met last week, Wednesday. We recognized Mark Gooden, who's retiring. He's been Orca's lead engineer for 31 years, I think almost as long as that organization has existed. And he's retiring, so we wished him well and talked a little bit about his contributions to the community. Also discussed a board field trip for the Orca Board coming up in April of next year to one of the air quality sensor sites. So we might be going to the scenic Mountain View Elementary School backfield, or some perhaps slightly, slightly more exciting place. But there are air quality sensors for Orca all over the, the five-county region where they check the air quality. And I just wanted to put it in context, how lucky we are to live here in the Pacific Northwest. You know, Orca does important work, measuring air quality, measuring pollution, kind of checking in with business owners and property owners across the five-county region to keep our air quality good. I was fortunate to go to India with my family a few weeks ago, and I was looking up some of the air quality numbers in Delhi.
Mm-hmm.
And I was there, I could see it, but it is very smoggy there. I looked at the air quality index in Delhi in November was 395.
Wow.
Healthy is 100. Our air quality index here in Lacey yesterday was 18. So we are so lucky to have clean air, and there's not, there are places in the world where they're not as lucky as we are. So there's a lot of things that contribute to that, but I think Orca's work to preserve our air quality in the region is very important. That's my report for Orca. The Board of Health met last week also. We did what we needed to do to designate an alternate health officer, so we haven't had a backup health officer. We had Dr. Abdul Malik as Thurston County's health officer, but in the case that she is somehow indisposed or unavailable, we need somebody to be the backup health officer. So Dr. James Miller, who's the health officer for the Department of Health for the state, is going to be our backup health officer for Thurston County. We had a presentation by Dr. Wheat, who's a very brilliant scientist, doctor from the UW Medical Center, who urged the Board of Health to begin talking about establishing a heat plan. So he overwhelmed us with data and statistics about how, in recent years, heat events, like the heat dome we had in 2021, have actually killed a great deal more people than pretty much any other natural disaster, cold, tornadoes, wind, electric storms, everything else. And the trend they're seeing in the data is that we can anticipate more of those types of events. Northern folk like us are actually less resilient when we experience heat events than folks in the South. A lot of us don't have air conditioning or heat pumps in our homes yet. We're also just not acclimated to it, so we don't realize how dangerous it can be until we're already experiencing heat exhaustion or heat stroke. So I hope to bring that to the Board of Health in the coming year, and keep that front of mind in the conversation so that we can prepare communication tools and other supports for the community when we have more heat-related events in the future. And the last exciting thing we heard from the Board of Health on was, we're identifying some new members. So Lenny mentioned we're expanding EMS board because the county commissioners are growing. Same thing's happening with the Board of Health, so we had to pick three new members for the Board of Health. And we did that. So they'll be joining us in January, and now we're going to have a gigantic Board of Health, because right now it's all of the county commissioners, plus a whole bunch of people from the community and me. So we'll, we'll figure out whether or not we're going to shrink the composition of the Board of Health in the future as well, because I don't think we're all going to fit on the dais. And that is my report.
Okay. Yeah, that was another one of the regional priorities for the legislators to do that fix.
Just a quick question, housekeeping kind of question, I guess. We haven't yet looked at or sent, usually we do the forum where we start picking the assignments for the committees.
Yes.
And we usually do that about this time, so we're ready for next year.
Yeah, so this is something that I've already talked to the city manager about, to talk about our, our next, our first meeting of the year. How, what I would suggest, and of course, there's a new council member that's coming on, but my recommendation is, is if you could please forward me what you, your assignments you'd like, we're going to talk about it again on our first meeting. Then it's usually our, our second meeting. Between our first meeting and our second meeting, I'll sit down with the deputy mayor and the, and, and the city manager and make sure we've, everything's come together. But the sooner you can get that to me, you know, the, the better, and I've already heard from a couple of council members, and so, but that will be talked about and discussed at our first council meeting.
And you'll, you'll, you'll be seeing an email from Nicole tomorrow, just as a reminder and coordinate out, so it's good timing.
Yeah. And before, we've reached the end of our agenda, but before I, I end this meeting, this has been a, one of those days where we've had to say some goodbyes. And, you know, we're seeing Councilmember Kunkel go. It was a really difficult, I have to admit, to say goodbye to Wade. You know, he's been such a part of this city for, for such a long time. That's a really tough one. But there's another goodbye we have to say, which really sort of has been pulling at my heartstrings as well, and that's to TC Media. This council's been very supportive of TC Media, and we have, you know, worked with them and, and try to support them as much as possible, but we know that TC Media was formed originally as CCTV back on the request of all the jurisdictions when public access was first starting to be talked about. And so we, the jurisdictions at the time, including the county and the cities, got together and said, hey, we would like to have public access, and can we form this association to do that? So we can provide our community with the, the tools to open, you know, open public meetings, so that we can broadcast our meetings, so that our, our, our community can be informed about what's going on at the local level. They also, you know, offered public access and abilities for the public to get on TV and to have discussions and, and seminars and, and, you know, a lot of things. Of course, growing up, if you're my age, you remember Wayne's World, that was a kind of a parody of, of local access. But, you know, for, for me, I remember Funny Guy on the Prow being a big part of this community and talking about things that were going on in the community, and, and it was very, Jerry Farmer was part of that, and he's been a character in this community for a long time. But I remember just seeing him go out and, and talk about places throughout our community that wasn't necessarily talked about. But TC TV, which now turned TC, that turned into TC Media, gave him the opportunity to do that. And so it's always hold a very special place in my heart. And I'm really sad that we are no longer going to have this same relationship with them. They've been a really important part of this community for a long time, and they've, they've, they've been a valuable asset, and it's, it really pains me. There's, everyone keeps on saying, well, times have changed, you know, and technology's changed, and I, I do understand that. But it's going to be impossible to replace sort of that thing that, that makes us special, that TC TV, TC Media provide for this community, that was there at the events and that was doing the things that we all felt as a community, and they captured it. And they, you know, the history that they have is now going to be lost, and that really, you know, pains, pains me to see them go. I'm, I am very proud of this council for their support, and I, I wish, we still have some opportunities to work with them in the future, but it's not going to be in the same capacity. So for all those who've, who've worked for TC TV, TC Media, thank you for your years of giving back to this community, caring about this community, all the different council meetings, and then everything you've, you've been able to do, I know this council appreciates, I, I appreciate it, and you'll be missed. It's the end of an era, and I hate to see it go. But I know, Councilmember Cox, do you have a few words you'd like to add?
I do, but that's a tough act to follow. I really want to thank Thurston County Community Media's dedicated and very talented staff for their many years of excellent broadcast service to the city of Lacey. Sitting through city council meetings, week after week after week, a lot of them are pretty boring, and yet they stay alert and they do seamless broadcasts of our meeting. And for those who watch our meetings on TV, I'm not sure how many of you may be aware of all the hard work that goes into making a broadcast happen seamlessly. There's a lot of detail to keep up with. I mean, you may have just noticed how the camera switched from the mayor to me very seamlessly, just one of the little things that shows you they're paying attention. I've personally appreciated the many services that TC Media provides, and so it's with a heavy heart that we say goodbye to this working relationship. And I just, the mayor alluded to it, but I just want to emphasize that it's not Lacey's choice for this to happen, but with the other jurisdictions that were part of it, deciding to go their own ways, Lacey just couldn't uphold the whole thing. And that's why we're having to, to end this part of the relationship. But I do hope Lacey residents will continue to support this phenomenal organization. They, they have classes, they, they do a lot of wonderful trainings for, for people. And so just thank you so much, Thurston Media staff, for all your efforts. We're going to miss you.
And with that, we've reached the end of our agenda. Without objection. Without objection, I'll call this a meeting adjourned. You have a happy holidays, everyone. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacey. And we'll see you in 2024.